If you got the right form, they're gonna miss us those additional shirt, which whatever.
Yep.
He talks just with a little tag.
Yes, thanks. Appreciate it.
And then he does. If you got the right form, they're gonna miss us those additional shirt, which whatever.
Yep.
He talks just with a little tag.
Yes, thanks. Appreciate it.
And then he does. Just let me do a telephone. My name is. I don't remember. It's twenty seconds.
Only seven.
No, we can do the thing. I can just let you if you have a telephone.
If you're taking a bit longer.
This is gonna set it.
We'll just call you.
I'm gonna be at first. This is the medical center calling me.
We'll call this meeting to order. A special meeting for the city council today if the clerk will call the roll, please.
Counselor Best?
Here.
Counselor Halverson?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez? Counselor Moore? Counselor Heldenbrand?
Present.
Counselor Arnold?
Present.
Counselor Oropeza?
Here.
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Foster?
Here.
Counselor Corn?
Here.
You have a quorum eight to two.
Okay, well then we'll stand, have the pledge of allegiance, and we will go to, we'll approve the agenda after that, please. Oh, we've lost the flag. Well, can we have a virtual flag in your mind, please?
Yes.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next, we have for approval, asked for approval of the agenda for today for the amended, May eighteenth special city council meeting. Is there any? Counselor Arnold? Could make a motion? Approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the agenda, approve the agenda for May eighteenth, 2023 for the special city council meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Councilman Corn. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by a vote debate and affirmative, none in the negative, our agenda has been approved. Next, we have. We have public partition, participation on agenda items. We have, the only people I have signed up, I have Ms. Dorhofer, Renee Otero, Bruce Andler, Adrian Quintero, and David Fiero, I believe that's right, and that's all for agenda matter one. Is there anyone else who would care to speak about public participation? Okay? Anyone else care to speak about public participation? Okay, seeing none, we will go to regular items, item, pardon? Regular items for item. Number one is to consider rate, consider the approval of the preliminary revenue and expenditure budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2024. Councilman Corn?
For a motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the preliminary budget for FY twenty four.
Ever motion by Councilman Corn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Lady Arnold? Okay. So now we're on. A motion for approval. Ms. Davies, Councilman Corn, would you care to, Ms. Davies, would you care to explain the budget? Ms. Davies.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We met on Monday and had the council workshop, which allowed each of you to ask questions. There were some changes that came out of that and some clarification. The package you got today is new and it has all of the changes listed in it that was talked about. There are page numbers on here, too. So if you go to page four of the one hundred and thirty. We wanted to do some clarification on some items. Beginning cash, when we were talking on Monday about receiving an invoice from the state of New Mexico, it's an invoice for a million, four hundred and eighty thousand, one fifty-five ninety-four. It was, it will be received and paid before June thirtieth. The beginning cash has been reduced by that. This is from the state for health benefits and life insurance assessment. It stated with the COVID pandemic, along with medical inflation, there are deficits in the employee health benefit fund with the state. The city's portion has been broken down as follows. Twenty twenty-three GAA premium payment was a million, two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents for fiscal year twenty-four. GAA premium payments was four hundred and sixty-two thousand, three forty-nine eighty-one, and then life insurance was fifteen thousand, seven seventy-six, twenty-three. That it, and, and we don't expect that to be a recurring expense. It is for the COVID timeframe and medical expenses were higher and a lot of the free COVID testing and stuff is what that is supposed to encompass. For revenues, the fiscal year twenty-four revenue detail is in your packet. It's pages ten through twenty-five, and if you look at those beside each line of revenue, we tell you how we calculated that revenue. Page twenty-six is the GRT. Because the G, the grocery receipts tax is broken out between several funds, we did a sheet that just lumped all of GRT together so you could see it as a total. Were there any questions on the GRT?
Any question? Councilman Perry?
No, not at this time, I'm, I'm.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, no, no questions?
Okay.
Okay.
We went in and explained a little bit more on the 116th environmental grocery receipts tax that was imposed in 2017. This tax was implemented in ordinance 1716, is for the acquisition, construction, operation, maintenance of solid waste facilities, water facilities, wastewater facilities, sewer systems, and related facilities. With House Bill seven, or 479 enacted in 2019, this can now be unrestricted, and could have been done back then, was not, so we're looking at unrestricting as much of the GRT as we can, which will allow us to move it to wherever we need to cover expenses. If it's restricted, then it stays in that fund. So we're going to unrestrict that. It'll take effect in January of 2024, because of the timing of the ordinance and the notification being provided to taxation and revenue. Grant amounts on your summary sheet, which is pages one and two, one, two, and three, those amounts are not finalized yet. We won't get grant numbers until probably June, so those numbers are last year's, but what we do with all of the grant accounts is we will budget the revenue, and we will give full budget authority to those funds to spend the entire grant amount. So it's really not going to have an effect on what you all are going to be voting on. Transfers are detailed in your packet on page 27 through 33. Once again, if you go through and you actually look at those transfers, it's going to tell you what we're transferring into each fund, it'll tell you what we're transferring out to each fund and what it's for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just to ask, since we continue going through those numbers, on number four, with the, with the change in the, in the environmental grocery receipts tax, and I understand in, in 19 with the House bill that it changed it to allow, utilize for unrestricted, where at in the budget will I find the information showing as to, because we're going to still have dilapidated properties, we're still going to have properties that are condemnable as to what's going to need to come down, where, where is that in the budget for me? Be up, see what's allocated towards that?
When the GRT was moved out of landfill as a part of the revenue, we also moved out what was called community enhancement, which was for the demolition of derelict structures throughout Roswell. That has been placed in code enforcement and is part of the general fund, which is also where that GRT tax is going to be housed.
So as of right now, that GRT, even though we're removing the environmental gross on that and it'll go into GRT, will we still be putting that amount of money towards the community enhancement, or is it just going to be dumped into, into the general?
It, it is part of general fund, so the community enhancement is being moved out of landfill into general fund, because we didn't want to take the revenue source out and leave the expense in there for the land, for the enterprise fund to have to pay for with no reimbursement. So we pulled out that expense. The actual expense, I think, associated with demolitions is about $281,000.
Say that again, 200?
271,000.
271,000, that's, that's left over right now?
That is going to be in 24's budget for demolitions.
Okay, and? Okay, I'll, I'll look further in the, as we're, as we're having conversation, I'll look in, at, over here into code enforcement real quick, go ahead, I'm sorry, thank you.
And, and I'll go back and talk, the, the environmental grocery receipts, we're putting a third of it in each one of landfill, water, and wastewater for the first six months of 2024. The last six months, that will be in general fund.
Thank you. That was not me.
Council Lady Arnold?
Just a quick question, as I understand it, we actually just recently only voted for advertising for the 116th environmental, so we actually haven't had that full decision made, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Because the kind of language is, as though we've passed that, and it actually hasn't, it hasn't been passed, so that, we kind of, that's kind of something to look at, is how the council determines where that should go as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Councilman Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. When I'm looking at the GRT back on page 26, you were showing annualized $44,606,000. How did we come by that number? Is that just projecting June's, or is that?
Yes, that is taking April's actual, actual GRT through April, and then annualizing it for May and June.
Okay, do, we, we, but we actually have the actuals for May, don't we?
Yes.
Came in, how much were, were they?
Hang on.
Okay, 45, or 4.5 million?
Yes.
Okay, so that's an actual 800,000 over what we, or last year's. The other problem I'm having is you're showing the 37 million for April, but as I look at the, the May's and the April, it shows here that it was 36,583, and we're showing 37,171. Do we know why there's a difference?
Yeah, the smaller number includes the admin fee. This is strictly GRT. The admin fee would be a reduction to this or an expense on our books.
Okay. So we're projecting, then, if we have the 4.5 to the 37, we're projecting 2 million for June? 2 point something million for June?
Are you asking based on the, the FY 24 projection number of 42 million?
Uh, the, no, not the 42 million, the annualized, 44,6, if you add the 45 to the 37, we're, okay, it's actually 3 million, about right at 3 million, so we're just ballparking June at 3 million?
Well, and I think, you know, if you sort of go in and analyze it, I think we were looking at about 3 and 1/2 million for April and May, or for May and June. So we've come in over, so I'm sure when we finish June, the annualized number is going to actually be higher.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Any further comments, Ms. Davies?
Ready?
Do you have any?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not then.
Keep on going.
The next item that we wanted to make you aware of is that in fiscal year 2023, we moved the UDAG fund, which was $1,015,404.68. This was actually moved out of UDAG and transferred into the airport, the air center fund of 5,100. So that UDAG fund is no longer going to exist going forward.
UDAG money, that was for the, to move us over into, for the hangar? Is that where the, that came from? For the UDAG money?
Come and speak, dear.
Well, that's all right. That was the money we put into, for the UDAG money that was left over that we put in for the hangar on 1084, or whatever it was?
Mr. Mayor and the counselors, yes, that is correct, that was part of the application when we applied for the federal EDA grant of 2.7 million dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on into operating expenses, some of the items that we wanted to point out was insurance premiums for the city as a whole. So building insurance, and I'm on page five of 130. Building insurance, liability insurance, auto insurance, all of those, the premiums increased a total of 1.7 million dollars. The original budget for 23 was $1,983,420. The premium from New Mexico Self Insures for fiscal year 24 is $3,723,490. That was also an unanticipated increase that we were notified in April of this year. So the $1,480 from Santa Fe for employee health insurance, and then this $1,740 increase in insurance for the city as a whole, we didn't find out about until April and last Friday night. So it's hard to anticipate and prepare for these type of things when you don't get them until as late as we got them in the year. The next item, number 10 on page five, refers to the community enhancement in the landfill, and I talked about where we moved the, the total operating expense for community enhancement was $318,201. The total expense allotted to demolition is $271,651. All demolitions are currently on an administrative freeze pending program review. One of the items that we talked about Monday in the meeting, in the workshop, was that for the municipal court, there was a request of $78,490 above a flat budget. $60,000 of that was for window repair, but we don't have a good estimate, so we have removed that from the court's budget. He has been notified, he's okay with that, he is looking to get a quote, an actual quote for what it's going to cost, and will come back to finance and city council once he gets that for approval, and at that point, if it's approved, we can add it to the budget. In economic development fund, all three economic development programs that we fund were cut 25%. Main Street Roswell's budget for 23 was $60,000. The request for 24 was $75,000. With the 25% reduction of the 60,000, it's $45,000. Roswell Hispano Chamber was budgeted 50,000, they requested 50,000. With the 25% cut, it's $37,500. And with Roswell EDC was budgeted at 200,000 for 23, they requested the same for 24, with the 25% reduction, it's 150,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask, how, how did that come about? I, we just, we just heard this in, in the finance committee, and I know I was on the phone, so maybe I missed something, but I had understood that, or at least I think we came out of that meeting with a, it seemed to be a unified approval of the 200,000, we didn't approve anything, but we, it looked like the consensus was, everything looked good on the 200,000, unless I'm just incorrect at that, and of course, there were some questions that were raised about Main Street and Roswell, asking for additional information, which I believe we have received, so I'm just wondering, how, how did those reductions come about?
Well, I can try to answer some of that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Corn?
As we were working through this budget and getting increased cost estimates for the problem we have with the security at the airport, the letter we got from our present ambulance carrier, we were just having to find some money, and it's just one of those places that we found some money that, that we thought was more important to be able to balance our books, and I know it's not much, a lot of money to these entities, but once again, we're having to make some tough decisions on this stuff. And so that, that, we were just looking for places to cut. Mr. Mayor, since we got the extra bill for our medical insurance, at one point, we were down to zero COLA for our employees, so we went and found enough money and, and were able to afford 1% COLA for our employees, with no steps. And it's tough, I get it, it's not popular with many of the people in this room, I get it, but there's a point where you've just got to stop and get this thing under control. And the numbers that you're seeing here, a budget's a living document, Mr. Mayor, it's changing as we're sitting in this room. It never stops. You can't tell that deer that you want to shoot to stop so I can get a good shot. Sometimes you're lucky and you get that opportunity, but it, it, it never stops. 24/7, this thing has got adjustments happening in the budget, and the, and, and the, the late, there's a couple reasons for so late getting this thing finalized, is part of it was the late bill we got for insurance, and there's just, information's coming in and going out all the time, and there's just a point where you got to say, whoa, we got to lock this sucker down at this point, that's why you have a finance committee and a city council during the interim, so when things change, because they're going to change. This isn't in stone, this is in paper. We're going to have to take a hard look at these things and make some adjustments during the interim, but this is as good as we can do, in my opinion, I'm not happy with it, let me tell you that, but it's as good as I think we can get done, given our situation. And so we've worked tirelessly, our, our finance team has been burning, literally burning the midnight oil on this thing, and spending weekends and stuff at the office trying to get all these pieces pulled together for us, and I think that they've done an outstanding job, based on the numbers we have to work with. And so the decision's made, where we get some money, we treated all of these entities the same, we cut them all the same amount. I'm sorry, I like those entities, I'm just tickled that we can support them at the level that we're supporting them at this point. Mid-year, we get a windfall somewhere down the line, we may consider bringing these back up, but we'll have to wait and see. This thing's moving.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Perry?
If I could, I just, my, my, my concern on this specifically, we're talking about 77.5 is what we're dealing with here, if my numbers are correct, but that doesn't sound, I mean, it sounds significant, but when you take someone like Main Street Roswell, and you're, you're cutting that much, I don't know what their current salary is with their director, and what they have with, within their budget, but that's a, that can be a pretty, 25% is a pretty major blow, even though it doesn't seem like much money to these entities, and I know it's easy for us to say that we can readdress this in six months, but if they have to let their employees go and can't continue to operate their, their, the Hispano Chamber, which I think does a phenomenal job in our community, I, I joined the Hispano Chamber last year as a supporter of theirs, Main Street Roswell, with everything their tasks to do and trying to do, if we cut that kind of budget, that's enough money that they may have. that kind of budget, that's enough money that they may have to totally change. And then in six months, they may not be able to retain an employee that we say, well, we can guarantee you work for six months, but at the next budget, we may be cut 25% or... I think that we need to have some consistency, and especially with the Economic Development Corporation as well. If we are truly, sincerely on board with economic development, I think that this is a pretty hefty concern here. So, I have reservations on those being pulled back. I yield.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Corn.
This is not the only place that we took some big swings. And that, I mean, the total dollar amount isn't much, I'll give you that. But we took big swings all the way through this budget. And we've moved some stuff from over here to over there during our meetings with Bert Lewis. He said he needed some pieces of equipment. And he told us, he said, I don't know where we're gonna get the money, but if you can find it in my budget, move it. Did you not, Lewis?
I did.
And they're not the only people that are taking a hit. Everybody's taking a little hit. We didn't pick winners or losers, we just tried to get through this thing. And we've cut the number of employees that we've got in the state of Mexico, both full-time and part-time, trying to get this thing wedged together. And so, like I say, I'm not real, I'm not happy with this budget, but given the cards and material that we had in front of us and the knowledge we had, I think we did a pretty good job. Yield.
Any further comments? Council Lady Halberst.
So, sorry, Bob, but I agree with Jason, because my concern is, these three entities, they bring more business to Roswell, and I think that helps our grocery receipts. And if we start taking money away where they can't do the jobs they need to do, I'm afraid that that'll lower our grocery receipts, and then we'll be hurting in that way. Yield.
Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. And my concern is that and the fact that at committee, it was decided one thing, and then suddenly, it was decided somewhere else to change this. And then this packet that we got today has changes. I was looking on the packet that was posted, and we listed 13 employees at the zoo. I look at the packet that we have now, and we have 10 in this budget. So, there was a deletion of three somewhere in what was posted and what we have. And so, what other things were changed? And giving us a packet to vote on, this budget doesn't have to be in Santa Fe till the 1st of June, correct?
The end.
1st of June is what I heard was statute. Yes, 1st of June. Okay. And so, it takes a little time for me to digest all this. And just seeing these changes from, as we're going through this, I have a real problem voting on something that I just got. And seeing the difference in what was posted online and what I actually have up here, being three positions at the zoo, changes that were made, I don't know, I'm not gonna say behind closed doors, but changes that, things that were made, voted on in committee, and suddenly it's changed by not the committee, I have a problem with. So, I'm at a point where I would much rather us, give us a couple of days, because this is the 18th. We have, we have 13 days before we really need to have this sent to, and us voting on it today, giving a two-week head start, where we could have two weeks where we can fine-tune it, makes more sense to me. I yield.
Council Lady Arnold.
So, I actually agree with Councilman Perry and Councilman Foster on some notes. I kinda felt this way last year, but that was because I was kinda coming in drinking from a fire hose. But, so, I am concerned about the community development, Main Street Roswell, Hispano Chamber. But when I actually did kinda bring up and raise the question, it was, okay, so where do we take it from? Do we take it from the zoo, the pond? Do we take it from the police department and go ahead and take that 50,000 in equipment? This is really difficult. It's really hard. It's really tight, because we're really working to actually get past some of the things that, you know, I think that Janie and Councilman Corn were hit with expenses that have gone back from two years. And there's a lot here. I wish it were simple, that we could just take care of everybody, but it's kinda like a home budget. Sometimes you have to decide whether you wanna pay the water bill or go to movies and a dinner. And that's kinda where it's a really hard decision. I would like to go to dinner and a movie, but I don't know what to tell you. It's really complex. Exactly, and that's why, I get it.
Excuse me, please.
Yeah. No, no, I'm saying, we have to make that decision. Thank you, sir. But it's actually a difficult one, because we have to decide, do we actually take care of our water bill? Because we can't afford to go to a dinner and a movie. And that's kinda how you actually look at it at home. You know, there are certain things that we have to consider, like looking at, you know, the zoo fees. Because can we afford to take that on? There's a whole lot here, and it's, I wish it were simple. And that's what I'm saying. It's kind of like being at home and having to make that hard decision. Your kids would love to go to a movie, but they also need water. So, it's very complex.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Perry.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend to allow for the Main Street Roswell budget to go back to the 60,000. We'll deal with the 75,000 later when we get to contract. Hispano Chamber of Commerce back budgeted up to 50,000, and the Roswell-Chavez County Economic Development Corporation back to 200,000.
We have a motion. Our Councilman Perry, clerk, would you get that? Would you like to repeat that back, or you got it all?
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second. I don't know where the money's gonna come from, but I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Perry. And a second by Council Lady Halberst. To restore the funds back for, I believe that'd be where it was, for Main Street, for the Hispano Chamber, and for the economic, Roswell Economic Development Forum. I believe that's all correct. Is there further discussion? Councilman Opressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if we do restore the amounts, back to the original amounts, I have to ask the Finance Committee, since I'm not on the Finance Committee, what kind of effect is that gonna have on some of the other changes that are being proposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Corn.
It's, some people think that's not a lot of money. But if you propose this, then the finance staff is gonna go have to find that money. And somebody else's ox, I guess, is gonna get gored on this deal. This thing is tight, tight, tight. And I hope I'm wrong. I hope that all of a sudden, people start spending money, and we got all sorts of GRT coming in. I don't think that's gonna happen, but I'm hopeful. I hope that this lean budget gets a little fat on the bones by this time next year. And we have the ability, we, City Council, Finance Committee, to make adjustments on this thing. And I had a meeting with the EDC earlier in the week, and I explained to them, showed them the numbers, and they're not happy about it. I understand that. I'm not happy about it either. But unfortunately, there's a point where it just has to be done. You have to make some tough decisions. And we've got to get this city operating out of the red, because we've been operating in the red for years. Many of you have seen those documents. I'm not trying to hide them. We handed them out at the Finance Committee, and Councilman Perry was sitting there. I trust, I can't remember now if Councilman Foster was there, but he's seen the documents for years. We gotta address it, and it's not gonna be easy. It's gonna be very painful, and it's not gonna affect anybody. That's why we did a straight-line deal, because it affects them all the same. And I would oppose this change at this time.
Thank you, Councilor Corn. And with that said, you know, I truly appreciate the fact that we didn't, we weren't selective as to whether to cut one or two and leave another one at the rate that they were at, that it was cut straight across the board. And my concern is, because this budget does have a 15%, I mean, a $15 per hour minimum wage for everybody that is not getting $15 an hour right now. And it also includes an $18 per hour minimum for any CDL drivers that, and I know we got a few, quite a few of them that are making less than $18 and $15. And I would, my hope is that if this one is passed, the amendment is passed, that it will not have an effect on those two items, because I think those two items are more important than the three entities, because they are getting at least something.
Which two items again? I'm sorry.
The budget includes a $15 per hour minimum for anybody that is making less than $15. And any CDL driver that is making less than $18 an hour, it is being bumped up to a minimum of $18.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Perry.
If I could, and I don't mean to belabor this, but, you know, and I'm not trying to be argumentative with any of my fellow councilors. I want this to stay as kind and courteous to each other as we possibly can. But, you know, when I keep hearing comments of, we've gotta quit operating in the red, we've gotta quit operating in the red, I understand that, but we're growing government. At some point, we have to stop growing government if we're gonna quit, you know, operating in the red. I'm looking right here at our current FTEs, full-time equivalents. In fiscal year 18, we're at 603 employees. And fiscal year 19, we're at 622.5. That's an increase, but it's within, it's within a norm for government fluctuation. Fiscal year 20, 617, right in there with that same fluctuation. Fiscal year 21, when I came back onto the council and we were dealing with COVID, we went down to 571. We didn't let, we didn't fire anyone, we didn't terminate anyone at that time, for reasons of trying to cut the budget, but we offered early payouts, and we did things because we appreciated our employees, and we didn't wanna throw our employees under the bus underneath a major catastrophe that America and the world was going through. We went down to 571. We recognize that the city and I, and I'm proud of our employees that worked very hard during those COVID years, when we were at a place where offering those extras were just not possible. They still got in there, and with less employees, they got in there and they got the job done with 571 employees. We come back, my next year is finance chairman again, at 622 employees. They're again going back to a normal regulation of what we're used to. But in our last year, fiscal year 23, we're sitting at 669 on paper here, but I requested the information to find out that we're at 695 full-time equivalents. That, we're growing, and we're growing, and we're growing. And when I look out here, and I'm not trying to get on a political high, I'm not running for office again, everybody knows, but, you know, it's hard for me to hear about being in the red when we're growing government. You know, and I hear what everyone is saying, you know, well, where are we gonna get the money from to pay for the $77,500 or whatever it may be? I would start off by saying, we can start out by slashing our executive and legislative operating expenses. And I know this isn't much, but we've got right here that we're gonna approve for us to get brand-new chairs up here behind the dais to the tune of $9,000. And so, I'm not trying to get on a high stump or get behind a pulpit, but I'd say, let's start there with part of that 75, with continuing sitting in these chairs. That's just finding one place there. I think that this is very doable, and I hope that we can pass this amendment, and we can also pass some other things to make this budget what maybe it should be. I yield.
Okay, next bit.
Mr. Mayor, to answer his question, if I could?
Councilman Corn.
Mr. Mayor, I don't remember the numbers exactly, but I'm gonna say that this budget eliminates 27 of those employee position full-time, and I believe 21 part-time positions. So, you know, this is, this is my first budget. I'm not claiming the last one, because I had no input in that sucker. If you recall, Mr. Mayor, you and I appeared to show up at budget meetings, and you were asked to leave, and you intercepted me at the door, so I didn't even go down and knock on the door. And so, this budget, I sat in the room, along with all of these people and some others. Juan was there, and various of our department heads were there. And I listened, and I know a little, a whole lot more about the operation of the city of Roswell. And this budget has some adjustments. It's not just take last year's budget and vote on it again. There are adjustments in here that are, I hope, work out for the betterment of all the citizens of the state of, excuse me, city of Roswell. I wasn't happy when Mike showed, Matthew showed me that letter from AMR months ago now, that they said, well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna accept your $165,000 a year anymore. It's gonna cost you 2.6. Now, those negotiations are still ongoing. We don't know where that's gonna end up, but we're working on it. There's been a lot of discussion about how do we get transition from a contractor into our own ambulance service? And there's lots of discussion about that. Many people, the fire department, have been involved in those discussions. See, the chief's sitting back there. He disagrees. You feel free to stand up. And we're trying to get this thing figured out, how to make Roswell a better place. And it, it's not an easy task, Mr. Mayor. Going to be the potential capital outlay for bringing an ambulance service in the City of Roswell? Five million bucks? Mike's agreeing with me. And if that's really what we're going to do, then we're going to have to get some cash to buy that equipment, specialized equipment. We're going to have to increase our number of employees to man those, those ambulances and all the stuff that goes with it. It's not going to be an easy, easy task. And, I mean, you know, you talk about in the red FY '22, we, we, according to my documents that you've seen, you've seen them, Councilor Perry, $14 million. Finishing FY '23, $29 million. FY '21, $13 million. And this, the, the newspaper has been given a, a look at this document. Is that right, Terry? I showed this to you, did I not? Okay. FY '20 is $38 million. FY '19, $63 million. FY '18, $48 million. FY '17, 29, actually 30, 29.9. FY '16, $7 million. We're going to close the books that we're going to start on shortly. And I don't know how much red ink's going to be on it when we get it closed out, but it's going to be a bunch. So, please, every, I'm looking for pennies and nickels as your Chairman of Finance Committee. I know that our financial staff and our city manager, because we've had several discussions, are looking, helping me find those pennies and nickels. Granted, these are pennies that we're talking about here. But eventually, it gets to be dollars. If you save enough pennies, you've got dollar bills in your pocket. And unfortunately, we're in this situation we're in. And I don't like it. I don't expect anybody up here to like it. I don't think Chad's happy, Mike's happy, Janie's not happy. Nobody's happy about this thing. But based on the information that we have, that we're making these decisions, it's the best we can do. Is that a fair statement? Everybody agree with that statement? So, I don't, I mean, I get it. I don't like this process that we, we've done. I'd like to have a little more time, but we kind of started a little bit late because we had a new city manager coming on and we wanted his input. I don't think anybody will disagree with that. And he got about that much out of this whole thing. I mean, he, he's a fast study, Mr. Mayor. But he'll do a better job next year than he was able to get done this year just because I would hate to take his job. I know how he feels when I first got, when you, when you appointed me Finance Chair, you told me not to mess it up. And I'm doing my level best not to mess it up. I'm trying to, trying to get the job done and move us forward and take care of these problems like TSA issues. Uh-oh, somebody's in trouble. TSA issues, last-minute bills on insurance. I don't know how, how big a percent for our ambulance service. I mean, waterline breaks that we have. We're spending general fund money for the Water Department. Part of that is that we're running a deficit. Mr. Mayor, you remember that we zeroed everybody's water bill back to January 1 of '21?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever it was. But we, we took money that the federal government gave us and we paid everybody current. And right now, we're about a million and a half dollars in arrears on our water bills. And we had to take another hunk of money out of the federal dollars to help cover that. If everybody paid their water bill, we could put that money back. So there's a lot of things going on that we don't have any control over. This, we have limited control over. We're going to do it. We're going to hope it's going to work out. And with the Lord's guidance, Counselor, we'll get there. And it's, this is not the first time we're going to have a tough budget. I project that the next two budgets are going to be just as dire. I may be wrong. I hope I'm wrong. But it just, it, it just, we don't have a print press like the federal government. We got to drag this sucker into place. And I got it. I, 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 it's unfortunate that, that we can't do that. But those entities that we're, this, this amendment is on have the ability to go out and raise some additional funds. They're private entities. And they have the ability to go raise some additional funds. So before they start laying people off, I hope they come up with some mechanism that they can have a fundraiser of some kind. And I hope the citizens all support it. I hope they make twice the money we're cutting from one event. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Councilman Corn alluded to was when, when we came into office on April, we were elected on March 1st and we were, and we came into office on April 1st. And everybody during the whole month of March, Council, uh, uh, City Manager Joe Neb and his department heads were all meeting all during the month of March and going over the budget and their items that they planned. I asked that at least the five new councilmen and myself be allowed to come into those meetings and, and here to learn more about our budget process. And we were denied entrance into that. And you know, and, and that bothered me a lot because I don't think that people having knowledge hurts anything. Somebody who has knowledge of their, of the system and the budget that they're in. And, uh, but we were denied that. And then we started April 1st doing a budget. And we had to have it done by April 30th or whatever. We had to have a budget crafted and then we sent it to the state. And that's, uh, that's the way that I recall how all this worked. And, you know, and, and as we go down the road, uh, one of the things I found was that, what I found out since then is the budget that they crafted that we moved in this year, it had a lot of crazy things in it. You know, there was $2.2 million in that budget. It was from hail damage to the airport. It was moved over instead of being held aside to pay for the hail damage. It was moved over into the budget, as I see it, and it was spent as general money. And so that's fine, but when we spend it in last year's money as, as just regular reoccurring money, it doesn't reoccur. And then this year, we have to go back and put the $2.2 million to fix the things that were broken. Uh, you know, we also got some crazy things like a, a TSA fine for 2.8 million or something. We've had a lot of things, expenses, that were not really, in my opinion, listed properly in, in the, as truly reoccurring money. We spent with non-reoccurring issues, expenditures with non-reoccurring money. And as I see that, I think it was, uh, it's been a very tough year as we go through here. I, I personally am upset with a lot of what happened as far as the money that we spent through this year. If you go back and you look at the last 10 years, when you look at that, we have not spent, our revenues have exceeded our, uh, our expenditures have exceeded our revenues for the last 10 years. And, and in all kinds of things. If you go look, when we look at the, at the, uh, waste, solid waste disposal, we don't even have, with all the trucks we have there, we don't even have a replacement schedule. It's really functional. And in this budget, there are some monies to buy two side-loading trucks. But you know, those kind of things, we, you've got to replace your fire state, fire trucks on a regular schedule. You've got to replace your police cars on a regular schedule. You need to replace your, your trucks at the, at solid waste on a regular schedule. We don't have any of that. Anything that truly lists like a budget that is going to move down the road in an orderly manner where we can truly know exactly how much monies we have to spend. And it's very difficult. When we came in here, you know, there were things that happened. You know, when, when we look at the big tragedy we had with the swimming pool having all the mold in it. But do you realize, no one told us that in April of '21, and we started in April of '22, that the dehumidifier had gone out the year, the year preceding. So now we've got a huge wreck over there because you've got all this mold. It might have been fixed if they had replaced the dehumidifier. And, and those are all costs and things that no one ever told those, those five new ones that came in and myself about what some of the things were happening. And, uh, you know, uh, we were supposed to have 120 policemen in a city our size. We were at 91 or something. And we added 10 more and we've got those position fills because we think we need to have the policemen. And you know, so we, we've taken some things on, on, uh, in looking at that. We've taken some, uh, you know, steps to, to ensure public safety. But none of us were counting on the ambulance numbers going from $165,000 a year to a $2.5 million subsidy, uh, demand for a subsidy. And, uh, you know, we, we have eight ambulances here. And you know, those ambulances are $200,000 apiece for an ambulance or a little more, and then $200,000 equipment. So we, somebody's got to buy them somewhere. We got to figure it out. We've gone and asked Carlsbad for ambulances that we can get to help us get by. So, you know, when I look about taking it, I don't want to take money from Main Street. I don't want to take it from the economic development. I mean, that's the only place where we can get it. I don't want to take it from the Hispanic Chamber. But what I am going to tell you is that if we don't take it, if, however, I mean, Chairman Corn, this, this was his, his deal about where to do it. Everybody was going to take a little hit. But in doing that, he also got us to the point where we could have a 1% cost of living. I don't think that 1% cost of living is really great for our employees. But if I give a 1% cost of living and I can keep, you know, everybody employed, I think that's a little easier to hit, to take than it is to have reductions in staff. And we do, we've cut every, from their work, they've cut every, every position out and, and halftime and part-time position out. So we're stopping any accelerated growth. We do have some problems at the airport that we're going to have to address on, on, on personnel because of the 2, the $2.8 million TSA fine we're working through. I, why would we get fined $2.8 million? That's a question, it wasn't something we did. Something happened before we got here. And yet we have to pay to fix it. And you have to help pay. Because we can't, the money we have, we can't get more money. If you tell us what you want to cut out, then we, you know, we can go through this thing again. But we were trying to sit down and come up with a plan that to get us on a level footing where we, we can get to a point where we, we have a scheduled replacement of police cars. You know, uh, we have a scheduled replacement of, of side loaders. You know, our rear loaders at the dump, at the solid waste are horrid. I mean, we had three of them and we, we had to buy one of those the other day too, just out of the budget. And so we have been, in the last 10 years, we have been in a, in a spend, spend, spend mode more than what we had coming in. But some days, you got, we got to balance the checkbook. And I, you know, I feel bad. I don't, we have good employees in the city. You get compliments on them all the time. But I don't know where else we get the money. And, and I, so we have to come up with a budget where we can make it. I, I don't like those cuts. I would just tell you, as far as I'm concerned, that's something that the private, private industry can step up and take a cut to. And I don't like it. In fact, I was very upset. I think one of the things that's got us the best opportunities about getting more jobs and higher-paying jobs in Roswell is from the Economic Development District. That's the thing I want to see funded to its fullest. We have more people looking at going and doing work at the airport than we've ever, than we've had in the last few years. People with realistic job opportunities. I mean, that's where we are. We had, uh, we had pledges of people to come and do things here. We spent money on attracting new people here. And then the, the jobs evaporated. And that's just what happened. And, uh, but we, we, we're a lot, I think we're a lot further along now about getting substantial people to come into this community to offer more high-paying jobs than we've ever been before. And I don't, uh, you know, I just think that if, if we take this out, then somebody can find another one. We fund 10 more policemen with that or whatever we do. Then you can cut back and you'll cut back more and more into the 1% that we could give you. 1% is not, is not much now. I agree with that. It's, it's okay. But there's a time for public comment. And you'll get it. I mean, I don't mind that. But that's, that's where we come from. And, uh, we have a lot of, uh, we have a lot of things that we have to do. I don't know where we, we got to find our ambulance service. You know, and that's, we've got to have that. There are a lot of issues and I, I just, I'm sorry it's the way it is. But it wasn't something that we had control over. And, uh, I would have to tell you, I would say, Mr. Corn, is it, is experience in his budgets from his activities he had when he was in the legislature. And, uh, I know him from that standpoint. And I know, I think he crafted the best budget he could. And, uh, and I, I am really sorry that that's the way, that's the way they came out. But at some point, we have to balance our budget. And, uh, and I, I'm, I'm really sorry that, uh, that we ended up in this mess. And, uh, but I think we've got a great administrating, a great team going that are going to be concerned with the financial situation we're in. They know it. And we, you will get a, a lot more truthful budget than you've ever had before from our, from the team we have put together. And, uh, and I, it's, there's, this is just, it's a mess. We've been in it a year and we have learned time and time again about the things that, a lot, been surprised by a lot of things that are going on and been upset by a lot of the things that are going on. But you won't find, you won't find this again because you have a different big group of people that are telling you what's going on. And I, and I can tell you, I think you can trust those numbers. And, uh, and I, I just have to tell you, that's, that's exactly where we are, as I see it. And I would, I don't like those cuts, but I would tell you, I, this will make some of the people who are in, in our community going to have to stand up and put more money into economic development. They're going to add, put more money into. into economic development, they're going to have to put more money into, uh, Main Street, and they're going to have to put more money in the Hispanic Chamber. And, uh, and if there's any concern about why just the Hispanic Chamber was singled out, the Roswell Chamber doesn't get funds from us and from the city. So, uh, just, just so there's nobody that quibbles about that. Uh, I'm sorry about that there's a day of reckoning, but it's here. And we'll do everything we can to keep, make sure everybody's employed. We are not going to be replacing a lot of employees unless they absolutely have to be replaced. And, uh, that's, I think that's our goal, i- is to make, uh, to make our community financially stable, uh, and in, in strong financial position. And, and we are certainly aware of the people who work for our community in the job you do. And I, it, it bothers me because I don't know where to get the money. We've got to have some kind of a deal. We didn't count on a million for it at the last minute from the state for health insurance. I mean, it was crazy. You do have a very strong benefit package. If you also remember in last year's budget, uh, as Councilman Hildebrand alluded to, or uh, at least he did to me, that we gave, we gave you a, uh, step increases last year, and you got an 8% budget, which, or an 8% COLA, and so that amounted to 10%. Uh, and you know, and I'm just saying that that's just where we are. I know it's not the same today, and it's, might be backwards because I know costs are going way up. But I think this is all we can do. And, you know, that's all I have to say. Who else? Councilman, uh, Halverson.
Oh, so first, thanks, Bob, for all the work you've done on this. I know it's not easy. Um, this question's either for Council Perry or Janie. Where's the $9,000 in the chairs you were talking about?
Uh, it's in the, uh, page number, what is it? 115.
Where are the $9,000 for the new chairs?
Page 115, the additions to the fiscal year 24 operating expenses, very first line of department, executive and legislative, $9,000 for new chairs for council meetings.
Where did that come from? Ms. Davies, where did that 9,000 come from?
It was a request that we had received when putting the budget together. It's 15 chairs.
Who requested it?
It was in a packet of papers that we got.
From the convention center?
Pardon me?
Did that become from the convention center, here's budget?
No, it wouldn't come out of the convention center's budget.
That just seems like a lot of money for chairs, to me.
I mean, who wanted chairs on them?
Yeah, I don't know who wanted chairs. Yeah. Um, another question I have is, what are the risks, if we give Main Street, Roswell, Hispanic, and Chavis County Economic Development Corporation, which I think what they do is very important, what are the risks, like Mr. Councilor Opeza said, that an employee would lose a job or not get a raise? That's what I mean.
Mr. Perry, I'll, I'll try to address that. Roughly 50% of this budget goes to salaries.
Mm-hmm.
And...
So there's a chance somebody wouldn't get a raise or anything?
You got to get the money somewhere. The problem we have is that if you look at our revenues in the past, compare them to what we're projecting now, they're all, for practical purposes, as flat as this, and we're not getting any increased income, but the cost for operations are going through the roof. For instance, I'm going to call on, call on the water department because this was an interesting thing. I think a joint of 8-inch PVC pipe was 200 bucks, and what's it selling for today?
800 to 1,000.
There you go, 800 to 1,000 bucks. Went from 200 to 800 to 1,000. The valves that are in the street have gone through the roof, and we're having to replace some of those old valves.
My concern though is for the employees. I don't, so...
Well, everything is on the table. Whenever you start moving the numbers, that's what we did whenever we met last Friday morning, was it, or, no, Monday morning, is that we actually, at one point, had the COLAs down to zero. And, and I didn't like that. And everybody thinks it's my budget. No, I was just one of a whole bunch of people that were in that room, and I won some arguments and I lost some. Actually, if I was keeping a real good score, I probably lost more than I won. But that's okay. Uh, we came to a consensus, and it was your executive staff, Mr. Mayor, that was in that room. I was the only elected official, and you came to a couple of those meetings. Um, so it, it, it's all compromise. It, it is the best we could do with what we've got to deal with.
Okay, on that note then, Mr. Mayor, um, I do agree that these entities are so important for our economy, but I think our employees should come first, so I'd like to rescind my second to Council Perry's motion.
I, I didn't hear that.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait.
You rescinded your second, but Ed made a second, is that correct?
I'll, I'll step in for her second.
Thank you.
Be a second.
I'll be a second.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Councilman Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, let us get back to what we're talking about. We're trying to pass a preliminary budget, are we not?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I'll, I'll go back to a former mayor who was upset at Main Street Roswell, and he cut them to, he wanted to cut them totally out of a preliminary budget. And I went, and I wouldn't allow it to happen because, first of all, these entities, uh, operate on budgets, and they, and not just budgets, but they, um, apply for grants, and, just trying to be, uh, oh, I don't know, he, he was upset with them for some reason or other, and so I went toe-to-toe and said we couldn't delete them from our budget and add them later, just because, uh, they, they came in line or whatever. And so I don't, this is a preliminary budget. Is this the, we, we have a final budget, do we not, at the end of, uh, July?
Yes.
Um, so adding the 77,500 back would make them whole, at least for right now. But my other problem I have, or not the problem, usually when we, we add things, we, we ask where it comes from. Looking at, at this budget right now, we have an ending cash balance of 1,015,377. That's correct?
In general funds, yes.
In general funds? And that's where the, the 77,500 would come out, correct? Or is that, is that not where we fund it from?
No, that is, um, economic development, and it's Fund 2630.
Okay, so 2630. Well, if we had to, we could pull it from our general fund to make that whole. But the other problem I have, um, isn't it statute that we have to be, have a balanced budget?
Yes, we have to have a positive cash balance at the end for all funds that we have.
And, and the document that you suppose, that you read from, I have not seen. Being on finance, I have not seen that document. And the fact that we've had, it states that we've been, uh, had negative cash flows for 10 years, but we've had a balanced budget? Have we not also had a audit every year?
Uh, yes, and, and the numbers that Councilor Corn was referring to are the revenues that are budgeted every year versus the expenditures every year. Uh, so the, the deficit that he's referring to is using cash.
Right. So, so the fact of the matter is, you can make it look whatever you want to, but our balance, our budget's been balanced for the last 10 years, correct?
Yes.
It's been audited for the last 10 years, correct?
Yes.
Deficiencies in, in spending, have, have they been brought to our attention from the audits?
Um, I would have to go back and look. Uh, there, there's audit findings every year.
There's audit findings, but from what I've seen, it's, it's been on how things were handled, how cash might have been handled, how we didn't have a dot in the right place, or it wasn't deficiencies, but, or budgets that we were overspending. Um, so we've had a, it's statute that we've had a balanced budget, we've had it audited, uh, DFA has, um, agreed with all our budgets, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I take exception to the fact that we've been spending money for the last 10 years like crazy. Because I, I sat over a budget, uh, in 20, when, when COVID hit, that we were actually, uh, we had to cut by like, I can't remember, 35 million, 34 million? We had to cut 34 million. And so to say that we've just been spending like crazy is, is very fraudulent and wrong. But the, the other problems I have is, we keep coming up to this saying, I keep hearing the same old things over and over, how we never were allowed in, you know, the past is the past, and it's great to be able to point fingers, but I've been here for several years, over the last 10 years, and guess what? Every year we have emergency expenditures. Every year, something happens that we weren't, didn't know was going to happen. We make for those, those allowances. With this, adding, and the whole problem I have is, we've been speaking now for probably over an hour on a motion to add 77,500 to, back to this. And this is still preliminary, it's not, um, we've already, already seen that, I mean, this is, figures that we got today, it doesn't have the 4.5 million that we, that we were over a million budgeted for, for our GRT. So we know we have more funds here, and I understand, we also have expenses that we don't know yet. But, but to cut 25% off of these, Main Street Roswell, the EDC, and, uh, and the Hispanic Chamber is, that's a lot bigger than, for their budgets than it is for us. And so I'm, I'm saying that we can, we have it in cash balance, we also have 5 million left in the American Rescue Plan, we also have, um, we also have more GRT than what we've reported in the, on these documents. So I think we can come up with the 77,500, and I, I would make the motion that we, 9,000 of it would come from chairs, that we can, we can sit in these chairs for another couple of years. Um, and that's over 10% of it. So, um, I say we go ahead and vote on the, on the motion. I yield.
Mr. Mayor, in addition to spending cash, since FY16 to FY23, we spent 5.691 out of the enterprise funds at the airport. Out of solid waste, we spent 6.4 million dollars. Out of water and sewer, 8,887,000, so it's a mix. You can't just point to this one and say, oh, this is where you did it. No, you did it from here, here, and here. And, and, uh, to the point, Mr. Mayor, since I've been on this city council, we use general fund money to bail the water department out, did we not? Not to mention the ARPA funds, the federal money that came in to zero everybody's water bill.
Yes.
That's another 2, 3, 2, 4 at that time, if I remember correctly.
For the water?
Yeah.
Was it 1,003?
Was 1,003, excuse me, got the first number wrong. So we've been struggling with this for a while, we're going to continue to struggle with it, and I hope I'm wrong. I hope this sucker falls into place, and next year, we have a better budget, and the year after, we have a better budget. But I don't, I, I don't see how you do this. This is not like balancing your checkbook, your personal checkbook budgets. You set trends and policy that follow you from back years, and are problems that you're going to have to deal with later on, and you've got to set these trends and try to figure it out. Now, that doesn't mean everything that we decide right now is going to follow through two years from now. There's always adjustments. This sucker is a living, breathing document. It's moving as we're sitting here, and, and, and it's, it's very difficult to try to get your arms around this. I think you've heard me say many times that I'm having a hard time getting my arms around this. Well, guess what? It's better, but I'm not where I think I need to go yet, and eventually I'll feel like I've gotten there. And I know that, that Janie knows this thing a lot better than I do because she's had to revise it eight or 10 times. And I, I don't want to have to go back and do that because the next big job that she and her staff has, or her, her team has, is getting this fiscal year balanced. And we don't know what those numbers are going to be, but they're not going to be pretty. I'm through, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. First question. First question. We also have, uh, for, along with others, A and B, or, could you store those, and, and our COLA?
Now, Mayor, can I get clarification?
Yes.
And we are changing those three items, and then we're keeping, making sure that the 15 dollars and stays, and the 18 dollars for CDL. Is that what the motion is?
No, that's not in the motion.
No, the motion is only to change those three items back to reduce those three items from being...
Okay, thank you. Councilor Best?
No.
Councilor Halverson?
No.
Councilor Sanchez? Councilor Moore? Councilor Hildenbrand?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Uh, yes.
Councilor Opeza?
No.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
No.
It's four to four.
Okay, we're back on, uh, the, by the number one, that's the, uh, third question by the council, we have, uh, I, I have to find out if you want to speak on that.
She's got a lot more to talk about.
No. Just a quick question, just to make sure, for, for my sake, and hopefully for the public, those, those items listed on 115 and 116, they are included in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And those items are there for you all to review. Moving on into capital outlay, the FY24 capital is detailed in your packet from page 117 to 130.
the FY24 capital is detailed in your packet from page 117 to 130. Department requests for capital were reviewed by the Budget Committee. Those appear with green, FY24. Those were approved projects. So, when you go through those and you review the projects, you can see what are new projects that were added by the committee. The following projects are not moving forward. The exterior signage at the museum for 120,000. The video surveillance system, the perimeter fence, and the farmland experience at the zoo, the visitor center expansion, and then Ascent. Are there any questions on capital?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask, it was upon picking up my packet today that I have learned that the Ascent 14.6 is being withdrawn. Does that mean that that ship has sailed, or are we not going to be getting those 300-plus jobs? Or where are we at with our conversations there?
Councilman Perry, it's my understanding, there's been a number of questions about that, the 14.7 million that we had, that was pledged to Ascent. The state came up with another $4 million that they were going to add to the cost of, what do you call that money? The LITA money. They came up with another 4 million that they added to that. And that would, at that price, Ascent, or they said they could go ahead and bill the billing themselves, because they would save, they would save $3 million in prevailing wages there, and that would allow them to build the building. So, they did not need the 14.7 million, or whatever we'd had in there. And that's, and so, but right now, Ascent has not answered us back about, for any of the questions that we've asked them about contracts and things that we have to have to pay people, and what contracts were available, that they said individuals had. We have never seen those contracts, copies of those contracts come back, that we needed to pay funds. So, that's, if they come back in, we'll get some idea. But that's where we are right now. I believe, is that not correct, Mr. Intima?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, I, yes, so that, without going into too much detail about kind of internal negotiations, Ascent does have 8 million of LITA money, which is not, would not implicate the Public Works Act that brings in scale wages. There is a potential pending litigation. And so, if you'd like to discuss this, that aspect further, I'd be happy to do it in a closed session or with you privately.
But I go back to my original question. Are you, is the city still 100% anticipating seeing those 300-plus jobs here in Roswell? Or, and I understand, there's conversations that do not need to take place in this room. I'm not asking, paint with a broad brush, and that's fine with me. But I'd like to know that the city is very active in their communications with Mr. Curio to try to ensure that we have those jobs coming to Roswell still.
Based on our last in-person meeting, the deal is very much not dead.
How long ago was that?
That was in January.
So, our last conversation with them was in January?
That was the last in-person. In that meeting, he did ask for additional time for his own funding. He's not come back to us with his funding.
Okay. And this isn't, you just happen to be the one sitting up there. This is not directed at you. But I sure hope that the city is doing a lot more communication with Mr. Curio and this tremendous opportunity than just last, you know, January. I yield.
Any further questions?
My last item will be to talk about the changes that we did to the payroll side. So, on page 36 of your packet, the number 1 and 2 refer to the changes that were made Monday after our meeting. So, I wanted to clarify that there's 29 deleted full-time positions and 21 part-time positions for a savings of $1,816,672.39. We also moved the community development city attorney from legal to planning, changed it from an appointed position to a salaried position, changed the grade, changed the step, and adjusted the salary and benefits to 129,255.31. Those are the only changes that were made to payroll after the meeting on Monday.
Yes, Council Lady, Howardson.
These deleted positions, are they just losing them through attrition, or they're not currently filled? Or are people losing their jobs?
No, they were vacant positions that we've chose not to fill and not to advertise anymore. It still leaves the city, I believe, with 79 vacant positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments? Yes, Council Lady, Arnold.
Ms. Janie, quick question. So, considering that there had been a promise of 14 million to Ascent, if we actually had had to carry that out and disperse that 14 million, where would we have gotten the money to complete our budget? Would we have been seriously short? Because at this point...
We would have ended up having to use part of the reserve and the ARPA money to fund that.
Because, I mean, at this point, if we're already tight, and you have to take an additional 14 million out of zero, that leaves you with negative 14 million.
Right.
Okay. So, we basically didn't have the money to actually bring Ascent here that was promised, correct? Yeah, okay. I understand.
Okay. Any further comment? Ms. Davies?
Pardon me?
Do you have anything else?
No.
Yes. Counselor Heldenbrand?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Before we take a vote on this approval of the preliminary budget, I'd like to bring some issues out, or point some issues out, so that people understand. We've got 1.4 million in health insurance increase. We have 1.7 million in liability self-insurance fund increase. We've got 1.3 million ambulance increase. We've got 1.2 million in unpaid water bills by the citizens of this city. There's 5.6 million with no additional revenue at all. That's what makes this budget painful for everyone, is the additional cost of 5.6 million. An item that's got to take place, which I have fought for and will continue to preserve for the citizens of this community, is what we call the American Rescue Funds. This budget is going to consume 2 million of that, because of shortfalls that are going to be in the water. And why do we have shortfalls in the water? 1.2 million unpaid, and rate increases that did not get, that were not put in place, that this council did not know. They were supposed to automatically be put in place, and this council was not aware of it, until we started asking questions, and they went, "Oh, we didn't do it." And then finger pointing took place. But it's a fact. And unfortunately, all of us are going to have to pay for this. And I don't know, what was that number of lost revenue? 2 million? In lost revenue, because we didn't raise rates?
Yeah, right at 2 million.
So, there's 2 million. There's 7.6 million out of 44 million in GRT. Add it up, folks, it doesn't work. It's just painful. But we all have to censure our bill and move forward, and make this city grow and move forward. So, it's not us up here trying to pick winners and losers, because governments should never pick winners and losers, never. But these are the real facts that we have, are dealt with, and we have to deal, we have to deal with, because it's reality. We can't raise prices just to cover our deficit. Only the federal government, they can print money all they want. They don't have to balance their budget. We do. And so, I'm just telling you, there's 7.6 million, and really more than that could be, because we're dipping into the American Rescue Funds by 2 million. That fund now is set at 5. I've said this when I first got on this council, that we're going to preserve that money, so that we can do something meaningful for the citizens of this community, and not use it for expenses that just get, chew that money up, that we've got nothing to show for, nothing. I'm afraid that's what's going to happen. That money's just going to dwindle away, and we've got nothing to show for it, except operating expenses. So... So, do we have a second on your budget proposal?
We have...
You made a motion for the budget. Do we have a second? I'm going to call for the question, so we can move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have, we have, there are five, five people that had signed up to speak about this item. If they would, we have Ms. Rita Kane-Doraher.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that's speaking that we've got a timer, three minutes, and you can see it there, and they can see it up above your head. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. I'm Rita Kane-Doraher, very narrow, unstriped Chicago Cubs mailbox, Mark Road. I am not a city resident, nor am I a city employee. I'm holding here a contract that was made by the City of Roswell and the United Utility Workers Union of America. Only one city councillor asked if anybody has talked to the union about this contract. That was Counselor Best. And I think that maybe you need to talk to the union about what is going on. Most of you know I have a friend. He is going to get a raise. He cleans your toilets. He picks up your trash on the rear loader, and he's making 35 cents an hour for his raise. Whoa. Really? And I'd like to give the rest of my time to a firefighter who works for this city that wasn't here in time, because he was working, and that would be Jordan Steele. So, I release the rest of my time. Thank you.
How y'all doing? Sorry for the not being able to sign up. I actually wasn't working. I just was unaware of the signup sheet. But I speak on behalf of the Fire Department, or the personnel of the Fire Department, as a upset employee and a concerned citizen.
Excuse me. Can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, yeah. Steeler Jordan, 1200 Avenida Manana. I live here in the City of Roswell. I'm a lieutenant paramedic. Been here for about a little over nine years now. And then, I got 20 seconds. In an incredibly competitive field of work, where the average firefighter, okay, I'm going to, I had something written down, but I'm just going to go with this. Okay. So, Roswell is extremely underpaid compared to our neighboring departments. I personally have worked here nine years, have topped out my medical license, have promoted to lieutenant, in which most people retire from. Yet, I could transfer departments to either Artesia or Eddie County and be making more as a basic firefighter than a lieutenant paramedic. This is an issue that we have come across, because we, at the Fire Department, are losing experienced men. Experience plays a key factor in this Fire Department. We, the city sees us as a number of salary. We're losing these experienced guys, in which this guy makes so much money, well, we could just fill his seat in. Yeah, you could fill it in, but you lose that experience. You lose what that guy has seen. You lose what he brings to the table. Instead of closing the door on the way out, like, "We'll see you later," we need to be, have a competitive reward system for the people that are here. This is a mere stepping stone, the Roswell Fire Department is now. We're so understaffed, and they're all moving. They're all moving to the neighboring cities, because they pay more, they treat their guys better. Now, I understand that the budget system is hard to work with you guys. Not here to debate that. What I'm here to debate is, sorry's not enough, because you're losing a very important part of this city. You're losing this experience. And the cop, I speak for the Police Department, too. I mean, it was mentioned that 10 new police officers were hired after there were only 90. All these officers scoffed, as it wasn't true. So, we're losing these important, critical positions, and yet, nothing is being done. So, I guess my question to be, to y'all, would be, what are you doing to keep us here? What are you doing to reward our time? Thank you.
Next, we have Renee Otero.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. Renee Otero, 3006 Victoria Drive, here in Roswell, New Mexico, residence. I'm also the union president for Local 51 here for our blue collar workers. And I've just put some things together here real quick. I understand the circumstances that we're in on both sides. But keep in mind, I'd like to think us as Roswell, we are a family. We're not just a number. We're not just individuals to you. We're your family. We're your neighbor. We're the folks on the ground doing the work for you. Okay? The City of Roswell Council is proposing not only to eliminate city worker schedule 2% step increase, but also to slash a previous proposed 3 to 6 cost of living increase to meager 1%. If council adopts this irresponsible budget, it will guarantee that city workers providing essential services for Roswell taxpayers will continue leaving city employment to find work elsewhere in our support, in order to support their families. A recent study by the City of Roswell shows that Roswell pays its employees far less than other municipal workers in surrounding communities. Already, Roswell has been unable to fill dozens of essential positions because of council's failure to provide for living wages. COLA and step increases are crucial, are crucial features for the city's long-established classification compensation plan to keep Roswell salaries competitive. Instead, the city council's draconian budget proposal would push Roswell further behind. The city's budgeting staff reports the actual cost of living rate for workers was 8.7%, and yet, city council is now proposing to slash its previously proposed 3 to 6% COLA to only 1%. The council's finance committee relied on a recent 1.5 million to, and unexpected charges from state government for health and life insurance benefits to justify cutting city workers' wages. And yet, the proposed budget eliminates more than 2.6 million from gross receipts tax that were projected by the city's professional staff from the fiscal 2024 budget, effectively guaranteeing that Roswell cannot produce a budget without first cutting city workers to the bone. I'm also a contracted coach for the community, whether it's here in Roswell or in Dexter. And the effect that the community, our wages have on family, I see that on the daily. There's been times I've sacrificed the funding in my household to provide for a family or a kid that we coach. a kid that we coach, to help provide for his family so that way they can go on a trip, new shoes, glove, whatnot. I mean, we really need to start taking into consideration on what we're doing to the blue collar workers. I mean, it, I mean, it was stated earlier, I mean, we'd like to go to a movie, have some popcorn, but to tell the kids no, I mean, how much further are we going to let this go on? Because in the future, with everything that's going up in cost, you know, it's not-
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otero. We have Bruce and Amber.
Your honor, Mr. Mayor, council, Bruce Amler, 210 South Ohio. I am the Local 51 Vice President. I'm also an automated operator with solid waste. Like Renee said it better than anybody could, I do want to thank councillor Perry and councillor Best. This is very disappointing. We are in tough times, but at the same time, you cannot put this on the backs of the workers. We all know how much everything, the cost of everything has gone up. You can't tell somebody with 20 years that they're going to get an 18 cent raise. That doesn't even cover what their mortgage went up. And that's, that's across the board. What I would like to do is ask everybody here that is affected by this, please stand It's easy when you're working with papers, your numbers, these are the real people, these are the faces behind the numbers. They have families, and as Renee was beginning to say, they want to go on the vacations, they want to have the popcorn. But at a 17, 18 cent raise, we're far, far sliding down that hill. And as the fire had said, how do you keep the people? Solid waste, we're running at about half of what we were five years ago. We're at a skeleton crew at best. We finally got a new hire. He quit today. Just got out of the truck, quit, left. These wages are not livable, not in today's times. I would really welcome for council to sit down with the union leadership and maybe we can discuss some alternatives. There are other ways out there. And I would stand for questions. I concede the rest of my time. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Quintero. I live at 3109 South Lee, Roswell, New Mexico. I work with the sanitation department. I've been there for nine years. I've seen a lot of people leave because of the cost, because they can't make ends meet. And then, at the same token, with them gone, it's putting a strain on us because now we're having to work overtime mandatory. And I just found out, like you guys said, the new drivers coming in are getting 18 dollars an hour. I've worked nine years to get to 18 dollars an hour and I'm losing out. So how, how, how is that fair to those of us that have been here long term to those that are barely coming in? I know you guys need to get help in here, but it don't help us that are here long term because we see that as a slap in the face and like all these other guys said, they'll go to Artesia, they'll go to Hobbs, they'll go to Carlsbad. I've been offered a roll-off job in Artesia, 25 dollars an hour. But I like it here, I love my job, it's just not fair to us. I received my time.
I'm David Fiero from 1511 North Greenwood. I represent the water maintenance department. I want to start off by saying, water is taken for granted until you don't have it. So here we are, 365 days a year on call, you've got five or six gentlemen that have to be here and they have to work, taking care of 50-plus thousand residents. So we're always here and we're all underpaid. 18 dollars an hour, that don't make no sense. We sit here 3:00 AM, you can see a fire hydrant that gets knocked down in the middle of the night when everybody's sleeping. What happens? These gentlemen have to get called in the middle of the night, be woken up just so somebody can have water, to wake up to water. That's what is taken for granted. And we never go home until the water's turned back on. So we don't eat, sleep until y'all are back in service. I don't like that. You know what I mean? These, these gentlemen here, they work hard for the money and they're not denying us the extra money that we deserve. We're in dangerous work environments all the time. You don't understand that. We could be hit by vehicles, we can have curves that fall on our head, you don't understand that. We're out here trying to do things for you guys till you have water, but it's taken for granted. We do this every day on a daily basis. Yes, we are understaffed, you know, and we're brothers keepers. We're all here trying to take care of each other, all of us in this room. You know, all we're trying to do is earn a living, a livable wage. We have a bad turnover rate, I understand that, but a 1% COLA increase, that doesn't make no sense. You need to make adjustments somewhere else, not in our, in our wages. I received my time.
Okay, that's all we have on the, on the list. Okay, so we're now, we're back on the list, uh, city. Uh, is my mic, just a moment, uh, just respond. I understand, uh, where it is, what you talk about, I didn't have-
Mayor, your mic, please.
When you talk about funding that other cities around us have, they, we have different levels of, of the amount of money that comes in from gross receipts tax, almost all of it does. When you look in Artesia and Carlsbad and Hobbs, they have a lot more expenditures that are made in their cities for gross receipts tax, whether it be oil and gas situations or whatever else by companies that are out there that spend money there inside of their community because of the oil and gas activity that they have in Hobbs, Carlsbad, and Artesia. We don't have a lot of that, those expenditures, so we don't get the gross receipts tax from It's really frustrating because we do try to look to find every way we can to find new jobs for Roswell. And, and that's, that's one of the goals that we spend a lot of time working on. And it's frustrating because the only way, the, the money that we have coming in is coming in what we're allowed, what the state allows us to charge, like they fund every city. Not every city has the same expenditure levels because of the, the businesses they have in their communities. And so that creates some inequities in, in how people can be funded. We're dealt with the gross receipts tax that we get, and I, I wish it was more, it'd be nice, but if you look at our percentage of monies that are spent on salaries, uh, to me, there are very few places that we can go to increase the salary levels that we have without reducing the number of individuals we have employed. And I think that just doubles everybody's workload and everything else. I, I really hope that we can find some businesses that can help pay, pay more. We're going to have to do some things. Some of the things we can do, and we're probably going to have to do, is look at our sanitation rates because they are too low. But it didn't help when we had the sanitation rates, then, and you put money aside in the enterprise funds from the sanitation or the water funds or anything, it doesn't help if we move, put the money in there and then transfer it out to pay for other city expenditures. That's what has been happening to me when I see this, that's what's been happening in the budgets that we have. People have taken money from the enterprise fund, transferred them into the general fund and spent them on whatever they wanted. But if you had that, the funds, and, and so we have to come back and we have to buy trucks and, and everything else, there's no funds to come from to pay for the trucks except out of the general fund because a lot of those things, the, the, the enterprise funds are, are not being used necessarily for exactly what they were set aside to pay for. And it's, you know, when we have to take 3 million dollars or whatever to fix the water leak over there by the, by the ball field on, on Montana, when you have to take that money out of the general fund because the money was not there in the water fund, that reduces the amount of money we can pay for salaries. And that's why it's important that we get back into a, a cycle where we have our enterprise funds that, that are not used as a piggy bank to rob to pay for other things. That's what's been happening in the past. And we can't keep doing that. And that's what, I think what we're trying to do is to get back into where the enterprise funds are truly used to fund the, the operations that you all have. And we're going to have to look at rate increases, probably in solid waste, we're probably going to have to look at water rate increases. But you know, some water rate increases we had on the books and the city manager chose not to enforce it. That wasn't necessarily us, that's just what happened. And so I know this, I just have to tell you, I think this council is in tune. I think that we have to get our spun, funding levels and spending levels back under control and get back to where we don't be robbing the general fund to pay for water leaks. That's where we need to be. And sanitation and everything else, we can't be taking to buy dump trucks or sanitation trucks out of the general fund, which is where we, we took to buy some this time. And it's because we spent, we've gotten a habit of not having any money in there in the enterprise funds to pay for the true cost of the enterprise funds. And I think we're going to get there this year. There's going to be some tough decisions we're going to have to make, but I hope that we're in, in a better shape. I don't, I understand your complaints, I understand about the firemen going down to Artesia. We trained four of their firefighters in our new class this year for Artesia and, in our graduating class. I understand that, we just have to figure out how to get our budget back under control. And I think that's, that's where we are today. That's it. So-
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Perry.
I, I don't want to just continue this going back and forth. I, I really don't. I want this to end and us move forward, but so many things are being said that are just, just not accurate, and I, I'm just going to say it and just be done with it. I'm not a preacher 24 hours a day, and it's just, just going to have to be one of those times where I, I just have to get real on some of this stuff. We talk, I keep hearing this, robbing the general fund and robbing the general fund and robbing the general fund and deficit, deficit, deficit. One of the, and this isn't a boast on me, this is a boast on our staff. One of the years that I was the chairman of the finance committee, we cut 34 million dollars out of the budget and put two twelfths in reserve. I don't know how you're robbing Peter to pay Paul when you're giving Peter two twelfths more money. We went from a one twelfth, which is required by state statute, to three twelfths, all while cut, all by, all while cutting government, about 34 million dollars. So I, I, I'm just getting tired of hearing that over and over and over. I get it, I understand. You know, I, I heard just a moment ago that, you know, spin, spin, spin when we've got to balance our, our checkbook, by what we have here currently is not a balanced checkbook. What we see before us now, by the numbers and the way, the way that we're looking at all of this, we're, we're going to be at 23,726,000 in the red, but that's, that's not the budget. You can't just look at the revenue come in and total expenses. That's why we hire great staff to come in and to keep their eyes like a hawk on these different, that's why we hire great directors, that's why we hire great police chiefs, that's why we hire great fire chiefs, that's why we hire great people to oversee these departments and a great finance team to be able to keep their eyes on this so that they, when they see that the spending is going beyond what the revenue coming in is, that we hold back. And I keep hearing about the red, but no one wants to say, as, as councillor Foster just brought up just a moment ago, I'm just going to tell you, if, if Roswell's in the shape that I'm hearing that we're in, I'm amazed that the state of New Mexico has not come down here and taken this city over. They've not done it. And, and I, I, I'm not here just to get on this, I, I just want to say one more thing and get it off of my chest and then maybe we can move on. With all due respect, and I know that I've said it numerous times, but I, I don't bring it up unless it's been brought out and I just want to educate again. All this business about new councillors being held out, new councillors and mayors being kept out of the process, and Mr. Cole, I, I want you to hear this very, very loudly. State statute does not give this mayor control or finance chairman, myself included as a former finance chairman, does not give us authority or relinquish to come up with a proposed budget. State statute says that's your job. Now, I'm not getting on to you, you've just, you're coming into this and I'm going to give you a bump break on this one because you're just coming into it. That is, that, this is not, as, as the mayor said just a few moments ago, I wrote down the exact words and I don't want to jump into it and I'll leave it alone, maybe it's best I don't find it, that, you know, councillor Corn did a phenomenal job in drafting this This is the truth. As a former finance chairman, Mr. Matthews is sitting right here and I don't want to get him in the middle of this, Mr. Fuentes is sitting right there, don't want to get him in the middle of this. When I was finance chairman, I never was invited into those meetings either. Why? It's not my budget. Not until the city manager by statute presents a budget for consideration, then it becomes the finance committee's problem. And the finance committee can take that budget and they can walk straight over to the garbage can and they can drop it in the garbage can and they can start over. I'd highly recommend against that, but they can. But at this point of the process, it should be that man's budget standing before us. That's the process. That was not afforded that process last year, I fought it last year, and I fight it again this year. That is, we keep on talking about, we need to follow the laws, we need to follow the laws, we've got to follow statute, we've got to follow statute. That's what statute says. And in the past, we've, I, I, I don't know that Caleb Grant, to my knowledge, was never a part of those meetings. I know Dennis Kenty, because I asked him of it, was never a part of those meetings. Del Journey wasn't part of those meetings. Steve Henderson, as a former chair of the, of the finance committee, was not part of those meetings. I could go on and on. We've got to allow the system to work. We have a manager that has a staff, and hopefully a very well staff, that knows what their departments need. They bring that information to a manager, not to a politician, and I put myself in that category too. The word politics, if you want to take it, poly in Latin is many and ticks are blood-sucking creatures. We got to get it out of our hands and leave it to those who are experts. And we've got people in this room that are experts. Mr. Cole has been in finance for a long time. Ms. Janie Davies has been in finance a long time. Mr. Fuentes, Chanel, we've got great people who know what they're doing if we'd get our hands out of the cookie jar and quit making sausage and let them do their job. I'd have a whole lot more faith in what I'm looking at if this was being brought to me by a city manager and his team. But that's not what I'm posed with today. And I've not heard from one staff member, I don't want to hear from myself or any other- And I've not heard from one staff member, I don't want to hear from myself or any other elected official on this. I'd like to hear from those experts that there is absolutely no possible way to get our employees to at least 3%. I just want to hear that. I don't want to hear from anyone but staff that it is impossible to get us there. Then I've got, then I'm at the table and we need to talk and come to tough decisions. But so far, I've not heard that. We're not talking about, listen, we're not talking about movies and popcorn. We're talking about bread and water is what we're talking about. And we're raising, and I, give me an opportunity, please don't clap with it because I'm not trying to grandstand this thing. I'm just tired and I'm frustrated. Water rates are going up. Waste water rates are going up. Solid waste is going up. Bread has gone up. Forget about the movies. I want staff to convince me that we can't get to 3%, and maybe I'm ready to sit down at the table and talk. Until then, I cannot support this budget. I yield.
Mayor.
Counselor Foster. There's a couple of things I want to discuss. One of the things that I, with y'all in the room, the three major, most important departments this city has is water, sewer, and sanitation. Fire department and police are very important, and I've told them many a times, but if we don't have water, our fire department can't work. If we don't flush, you can't flush your toilet, you don't care about a police department because no one's going to be sticking around very long. So the three most important departments are our water, sanitation, and our sewer. But that being said, the other thing that I got to get, I keep getting told, and I keep hearing is that our former city manager made the decision not to increase the rates. If I'm mistaken, who's in charge of increasing our water rates by statute, when we have our statute? Who's the one that's supposed to increase it?
The supervisor in the water department would be the one to input them.
All right. And what department does that fall under?
Me.
Okay. So, and I'm sorry, Ms. Davies, that is, it falls under you. Now, truthfully, I know the mix-up we've had in that utility billing and supervisor. Personally, I know lots of the problems that they've had. And so I understand why there was a mistake. But now it gets, keeps being pushed at the former city manager. And that's not the case. He was at the time trying to decide whether they should change it when it was forced his hand, but he wasn't the one that said not to increase the rates, that we weren't increasing the rates. The mistake was made in the billing department. And at that same time, and Ms. Davies, this is another thing I don't like doing in an open meeting, but one of the things that hurt, kind of hurt me was when we approved your contract, it was for what, $145,000, $146,000? And my statement was, is that what you're making now? And the truth was, that is what you were making then, but July, you were making 110. Somewhere between July and that time, there was a $35,000 raise that was not, didn't come through council, I didn't know about. And that happened, and that's happened, other things that I've found out has happened, and we're not increasing rates, or we're not increasing our COLAs. So that's my problem, when we're being told that there's no money in this budget, but we keep hiring people and keep giving raises internally that we're not told about. I know. And, but we don't have any money. We have money. And I'm with Counselor Perry with, until staff comes forward and tells me we don't have it, I have a problem with how this was presented to me. I have a real problem with it being presented to me today and then having to vote on it today. And the changes I've seen, the staff changes that weren't in our, posted, that it's in this, I have a problem with how this has been run and how the finances, and I'm on the finance committee, but some of this stuff I haven't seen. So that's where I can't go forward with this, and I can't vote for this as a, for this right now. And like I said, we still have 13 days to go over some of this before we actually have to send it. I yield.
Counselor O'Paisa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is very simple to Mr., to Chad and to Janie. Does a city budget allow, in your professional experience, allow for a 3% increase? Since we haven't asked the staff, I'm asking the staff. Is there 3% for increases in the budget?
Thank you, Mr. O'Paisa. Mayor Jennings, members of the council, appreciate the question. I appreciate the vigorous debate. That is as it should be. Transparency, as it should be. Attendance at finance committee in the weeks, months leading up is certainly part of that transparency. I don't think anyone would argue, in terms of a new administration or new folks coming in, transparency is critical. What I see, and I can relay it back to an example of when I was at the school district, is 2008, 2009, the credit freeze, the real estate markets crashing in 2006, and the delayed reaction or the, whoops, it's okay, the delayed response or lag time to the impact of the states that was national and global. But what we saw were our revenues suddenly fell out, the bottom fell out of those here in New Mexico. In particular, the big issue was oil and gas, and particularly gas. And at that time, it was a slight change in natural gas costs, reduced revenues severely. So they went, they were cut in half overnight. And the school district budget was severely impacted, and it wasn't just one school district, it was school districts across the state of New Mexico. And the expenditures were already structured in. And so we had this sudden structural problem where recurring revenue was not anywhere close to recurring expenditures. And we were looking at reduction in force, or what they call a RIF at the time, and it was terrible. It was awful. It took us years to dig out of that hole. And what I see here at the city is nine years of structured revenues falling short of structured recurring costs, meaning our expenses were outpacing our revenues year over year over year for the last nine years. And I did ask for that information, and we did receive that information, and that's the red we're talking about. So the fact that we've got a cash balance or had a very sizable cash balance at one time, the problem with dipping into your cash is once you take that cash, it's the same way with your bank account and writing a check. You can't write a check without cash in the bank. But once you do, it's gone. And the problem of recurring revenues versus recurring expenditures, you can think of your own home budget and your paycheck, that's your recurring revenues that go in there. If you're spending more than those recurring revenues, then what you're dipping into is what's left in your cash balance in your account. And once you've spent it, it's gone. The problem with a governmental agency or school district, either one, is that once you've spent that cash balance down, now you've severely limited yourself in what you can receive and operate out of federal reimbursement awarded funds because you have to cash upfront those expenditures. So that's a long, convoluted way to say, we got a structural problem here at the city of Roswell. That's a fact from looking at the last nine years of expenditures outpacing revenues. I think we're looking at some problems in the economy, whether it's the feds adjusting their budget or passing legislation to balance their budget, which could have an immediate and severe impact. We're certainly have seen the impact of interest rates on mortgages and housing markets. Recession, they've been talking about it for the last four years. It's certainly ramped up in the last two. I don't think recession is out of the question. I think technically, we've already seen it. If you look at the technical definition before it was changed last year. So those things are all on the table, so whether we're looking at projected revenue and, and by the way, we've got to come in right on that projected revenue. We can't afford to be wrong. We can't afford to budget excess revenue again, or in excess of where we actually come out at and hope that it materializes. I understand, looking at the actuals and where we're at right now, but we really can't afford to over-project revenue. And again, we've got a problem where our expenses are larger than our revenue from one year to the next. And at some point, that cash balance is gone, and now you can't even operate federal reimbursement grants that fund a lot of these other projects. So I'll just tell you, you know, we've added new police officer positions, critical positions that the community has asked for. I know you, as a council, as a city, have added positions for animal control. I know that's been in the current year. I know that's been a critical issue in our community as well. We've got a lot of dogs and cats running around out there in a full shelter at all times. You know, we listened, I started coming to these finance meetings, I started April 10th with the city. I started coming in March to your finance committee meetings so I could try and wrap my mind around what all had happened and how things had shifted and moved from one place to the other and understand the budget. And, you know, we heard from the blue collar folks that $15 an hour was a must, that we heard from folks that CDL needed to be at $18. We heard that there needed to be a cost of living adjustment. We've heard from the community that we need to continue with our streets, they're falling behind. Everywhere I look, there's issues that have not been addressed, whether it's trucks that are greater than 10 years old with no replacement schedule, to you name it. 1.4, almost 1.5 surprise, million dollar surprise last week, late in the afternoon before we met with this council to discuss this budget last week. These things are real. You've done a better job of outlining these increased costs, whether it's TSA settlements, $2.4 million for ambulance service that was previously $165,000, $2 million in hail damage that was absorbed in the fund but not spent on fixing roofs that still need to be fixed or replaced. There is no shortage of problems and issues. I think where you're absolutely right is you've got a solid staff. You've got a solid, blue collar workforce. My thought initially, and still to this day, is we need to, what we've seen is rising on the top end of the salary schedules and administrative pay, and that needs to reverse. We need to address the bottom end and lift that up. And I'll stand tall on that one moving forward from one year to the next. But in the meantime, we certainly need to justify our budget items, what those are, whether you want to call it zero-based budgeting or whatever. And we certainly need directors that understand how many personnel they have, what they're asking for, and are not being frivolous with their requests for additional staff. And I don't think we've done that in this budget. I know that everyone has worked really hard, and every week, we've come in and tried to trim out in a way that is less impactful on our own staff because they are our family. These are the people that take care of us and our community, and I don't disagree with that at all. So in my opinion, it's not there until we get this thing restructured and get our revenues matched up to our expenditures. And I'll tell you, I don't think I've had, maybe one, maybe two, maybe two years and 18 years at the school district where we didn't balance and hit the target, not just projected, actual revenues to recurring expenditures. And that is why the school district has a healthy cash balance and is in great shape, and that's where I'd like to see the city, and that's why I came here.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. So I'll ask Ms. Davies the same question, since you are the one that ultimately is responsible to project a budget, present it to the city manager, and then it comes to us. So in your opinion, is there 3% available in this budget?
I don't feel so without increasing revenue. And, you know, we are taking a conservative approach on GRT, and I think we need to. I think the economy right now, we don't know where it's going. And I'm sort of with Mr. Cole, I would rather be safe than sorry. Finance people, we tend to err on the safe side. So we're going to be flat budget. We're going to do flat revenue when we're projecting. The expenditures are there. What I don't think a lot of people remember or bring, understand is that, you know, the cash balances were there, so the city was functioning and functioning well. Nobody ever dreamed that COVID would happen. And when COVID happened, and we were mandated that, you know, you don't shut water off, you don't stop services, and the length of time that that lasted affected the enterprise fund, so much so that water was in the red. So when I started in February of '21, you know, they were coming out of COVID, but not to the point of we were going back and actually enforcing people paying their water bills and all of that. So we went for, up until actually September of '22, before we actually started enforcing and making people pay their water bills. We haven't even been back in business a year yet to see what that revenue's going to be. I can tell you that what I saw when I came in and the delinquent accounts that were out there have tripled. Because although we're back collecting and trying to enforce that, people aren't paying those bills, and we don't have the money. So when COVID happened, and, you know, the city was spending and spending well, then all of the COVID money started coming in, so they still had the money. We're not seeing that now. So we're down to the last $5 million of our COVID money. We've got the three twelfths that Counselor Perry talked about. We have to keep one twelfth of that. When that two twelfths, then that COVID money is gone, we have no spare money anywhere else. And I am con- And I am concerned for, in particular, the water fund. I'm hoping as this next year goes on and we get some things in place because we're looking at a collection agency, we're looking at, you know, holding people accountable for their water bills, that that revenue's going to increase. But until I see it, I don't know that it's going to be there, and I don't know how much. Because we are sitting right now with the million five in unpaid water bills.
My last question to you is, do you feel that the Finance Committee has taken over your job?
No. We had a, for budget purposes, we had a committee. And I think Counselor Corn sort of alluded to it. We had some hot and heated discussions in there. I think we are all experts in our own area. Mike Matthews and, you know, the public safety. Chad and I being finance people, we all have our area of expertise, and I think that came out in the meeting. You know, and it came down to what a consensus was. What, what is going to be best for the city in trying to move forward and keep us viable for next year? Because I'm not just sitting here looking at this budget. I'm wondering how we're going to make budget next year.
Thank you both. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, call for the question.
Have a question been called for? Wait up. Is there, do you have a motion for the call of the question? All those, or the clerk, do you want to call the roll? Would that be better?
Yes, that would be better.
Clerk, call the roll.
This is for calling the question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
By a vote of eight, affirmative, none, and the negative, the question's been called for. The clerk will call the roll. And this is on a motion by Councilman Corn that we had, by Councilman Corn, seconded by Counselor Arnold, that we adopt the approval of the preliminary review and budget, expenditure budget for the year ending June 30th, 2024. Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Best.
No, with a statement.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Foster.
No.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Four to three or five?
Five to three.
Five to three, yes. By a vote of five, affirmative, three, and the negative, the council has been approved. Council, Council Lady, Best.
Well, yeah, I thought it was six votes.
That was six to three.
No, it has to be six elected officials within the majority with the whole council, not just the ones that are present. Am I correct? That's my, that's not my statement, but we'll let him figure it out before I get there.
Counselor Best, Mr. Mayor, this is not the final budget resolution. This is just an approval of the budget. So majority vote works. Had this been a resolution, six votes in total would have been needed.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go on with my statement. I refuse to say yes to lower pay and benefits for our staff. We have worked very hard to get you to the 3% and your step increases. We saved you through COVID. You didn't leave us. I'm not going to leave you at this point. I refuse to take away from our buildings, our fleets, RPD, RFD. I refuse to say yes to lower care of our citizens and our community. I wanted to stand when the gentleman asked if it affects us. It affects all of us. You guys are the foundation of Roswell. You should keep your income for your bread and milk. Not suggesting you get a milk cow, but that's okay, for your bread and milk. Your jobs all affect us. Yes, I was the only one that asked, like Rita said, if, if the caller or the, the union, thank you, if the union had been asked. Because we are supposed to work with the union, not against them. And right now, they're working against them. And I don't want to work against them because when I call 911, I want my fire chief and my police chief there. Well, maybe not them, but anyway, I want someone there knocking on my door, chasing that boy through the park that I chased in '20, chasing him through the park to catch him instead of me catching him because he was in my house with the 9 mil. Okay? I want you guys to be my foundation. And I think you need to hang on and keep going with your unions. Now, I think part of you don't understand one twelfth, two twelfths, three twelfths. By state statute, one twelfth means that we have to have one month of income for our employees. And they keep telling me not to divide councils. During COVID and during everything else that we have done, we were able to get two more twelfths for you guys. So if something drastic happened to the city, we would have three months of pay for you guys. So that's what that means when they speak of one twelfth, two twelfths, three twelfths. So when they start digging into that, your three twelfths is going down and your monthly pay is going down if an extravagant accident happens and the city cannot pay you. It is there for you. Ms. Davis, I'm sorry, you're not the only one that your pay has gone and escalated. There were a few other employees, a few hired, a few that have already been on. And of course, we're not allowed to talk about it. But they were not taken to the complete council. They were not taken to the manager. He was not here at the time. They were just done by finance and the mayor. So I think that's wrong. But I have found out in the last year, in my position, I have nowhere to go to ask questions when something is going wrong. There's no one to go to. If something's illegal or not working right in the city, there's no one that we as elected officials can go to. Because in this town, it's not what you know, it's who you know. So I voted no on this because I think the employees are the foundation of the city. I'm going to fight for you all I can. And my heart goes out to you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we still have another item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the recommendation to allow us to send the proper paperwork to Santa Fe to include the newly designated area just to our immediate north under the liquor license.
Second. Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Opeza.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Motion passes.